All right. Ready when you are. Okay. All right, we will now call the City Council's Special Meeting to order February 23 at 6:00 PM. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be given by Councilwoman Brittany McGuire.
Dear Lord, thank you for this evening. I'm asking you to give us wisdom and insight as we go through these documents this evening, Lord. Help us to come up with the best decisions and the best solutions, Lord, as we go forward. Keep us all safe and healthy and our families as well, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Madam Clerk, feel please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. We have but one item. Discussion of the airport AIPP application and lease. Who, Lowell, will you be presenting tonight?
Yes, sir. And City Manager asked that I just briefly read into the record an update.
Okay.
So everybody's kind of on the same page. And just to remind everyone, the city received an unsolicited proposal in the spring of 2021. You advertised that in accordance with the Florida statutes for a period of time. You received one proposal that was evaluated and accepted subject to negotiating an adequate lease and review of that by the Federal Aviation Administration and Florida DOT. Florida DOT reviewed it very quickly. FAA reviewed it and came back almost a year after we started the process and said, hey, we would really like for you to go in a different direction under what they called their AIPP program, which is essentially their public-private partnership program. And at that point, the city said, we're fine doing that, but we really don't have the funds to continue with that effort. FAA said, we can give you a grant to do that. So we applied for the grant, and unfortunately, they took over their two fiscal year periods, so we didn't get the approval until November of 2022. In the interim, the city decided to go ahead and hire FAM under an operations agreement in the spring of 2022, and they've been operating the airport since then. That brings us...
Do you mind if I interrupt you? Can you explain that grant, what we received?
The grant that was received was under the FAA Airport Improvement Program. And the grant provides what's called the due diligence for the city to essentially prepare all the documents and to review everything necessary to submit the application to Federal Aviation Administration.
So we have received any monetary value from that yet?
Yes, sir. There was a grant that was received with the city match is $480,000 total.
So that would help cover some of our...
Cover everything, yes.
Okay. That's good to hear. Thank you. That's what I wanted to explain.
There is the ability to apply for a second grant, and the intent there is that if FAA reviews it and says, yes, we'd like to move forward, we anticipate they're going to have comments and questions that we'll need to follow up, and then there will be a transition that will take the airport, not only just the operations, but the financial and all the other aspects, the leases and everything, and shift that over to FAM. So there will be a transition process to accomplish that.
Do you have any estimate of that timeframe?
We'll talk about that a little bit more during the presentation.
Do you mind if I ask you questions as we go through?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Please do. Pull that up. He's putting it up. Thank you. The current status, we went over that. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that. Today, what we want to focus on is what we call the financial policy decisions associated with the long-term lease. And we have provided a draft lease to FAM for review, but it does not have these provisions in there because as we started talking these through, the team felt that the City Council should have the opportunity to have a discussion on these items and provide input to the team to help finalize the lease documents and the AIPP application. So we'll go through those. There are some key revenue elements, we'll call it. Federal Aviation Administration requires that there be a base rent for ground leases, that rent has to be essentially a market rent, to market rates. They understand there may be, need to be some flexibility in this because they understand that the current airport is not earning its keep, so to speak. So they've said, look, we'll be flexible with you on this and work with you to make it work well. And they said they would consider things like deferrals and other things if those are needed during the early time periods. There's additional rent that comes into it. There was discussion early on about sharing of these costs to essentially get to this point. The city did have to put funds out during the time period, and FAM also has to put out funds on their side to pursue putting this together. And that's an item that there was a discussion back in time about this, and one of the things that we would like to essentially put together for you, not today, but we're generating the information through your staff of what that cost has been as far as the city and FAM's putting that together too. And we'll bring that back to you at a follow-up meeting to discuss that in detail as to how that's going to be shared and how it might be rolled into this lease.
Okay.
Does that make sense? In addition to that, any amounts that we'll call FAM not meeting their obligations, and I'll give you the example, say for example, they have to do a repair of something, something breaks out there, the fence or whatever breaks, and the city says, hey, for safety reasons, we need to fix that. And FAM has for some reason not done that, and you have to spend a little extra money, that would be something FAM would be obligated to reimburse you for. Okay? So...
Is that before or after the lease?
That's after the lease starts.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. And any type of deferred, if there's any deferred rent, such as you give a deferred year or two, that would also come into that to be reimbursed. And any future advances the city might make through your annual budget process, in addition, that would go into what we call additional rent payments.
Okay.
There could be revenue sharing. We'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. As far as prior and future advances, Federal Aviation Administration allows us to take money that the city has advanced in the past to the airport, and there's been two significant loans that have been done. And in addition, there has been this process, plus you've made advances to FAM during the operating period. We're going to roll that into a list, and it's going to be in excess of a million dollars. And the reason we're doing that is it will go into the lease, and when FAM pays you rent, you can then pay yourself back. Okay? Normally, if the revenue generates from the airport, it has to be reinvested in the airport. This allows you to essentially draw money out through the rent payment structure and pay yourself back on the general fund, water and sewer funds, those areas that you've made those advances from.
I see.
Okay?
Okay.
So it'll allow you to do that, and that'll be one of the things we'll build into the lease that FAA will sign off on. And we've already discussed that with FAA, and they're in agreement with that.
Okay.
So...
But it's going to take them a while to actually be positive.
Well, the rent itself, you know, is a requirement from FAA that that be paid. So the rent itself, and that's something we can talk about a little bit more later as to when that's going to start. But normally, that would start at day one for the lease. So those are things that we can talk about and kind of finesse as we go through this collectively.
Well, I just saw it here where you had to mark 10 years to become revenue positive. That's what I was...
Well, that's a target.
Yeah.
I think FAM may have a plan to do that quicker. I'm sure they hope to do that quicker. I'm sure the city hopes to do that quicker, but that's kind of a target.
Okay.
In a 30-year lease, you know, to try to go in that direction collectively. As far as the proposed base rent calculation, we have to do what's called step one is a scope. We have to decide what goes into the lease. So the assumption is the ball fields and the water sewer facilities would not be part of this lease. The assumption is everything else would be in the lease. So one of the questions that comes up quite often in these is what we would call the fixed assets of the runway and those types of things and being part of the appraised value of it. And that's something that normally in the prior lease, we were not going to include it because we essentially weren't doing a full lease-out approach. And this, under the AIPP, Federal Aviation Administration would say, hey, if they're leasing the whole airport, they're leasing the whole airport. So it would be part of that overall appraised value within that. Now, it's going to be obviously spread over a long period of time, and essentially, just like a regular lease of a building would be, if it's got a 20-year life or a 30-year life, you would calculate the lease for that period. So we're not trying to do anything more than what we'd see commonly in business practice. We would, in the second part of this hire, and this is part of what the second grant would be funding, a certified appraiser to come in and do that appraisal and set that final value of which the city and FAM would review and sign off on. Federal Aviation Administration and Florida DOT would also review it and sign off on it.
So just to be clear, you said that we would have to get the second portion of that grant in order to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
And FAA has said they're okay with that. They're not opposed to that.
Okay.
Mayor, we're actually working on getting that in.
Yeah, we are working on applying for that essentially next week with what they call the preliminary application.
Okay. That's the only part that's, you know, very much different than a normal lease situation is that we're discussing, you know, lease terms. We have no idea what the price even is for the lease yet because we have to, you know, do this other process.
Well, we do, we do have an appraisal that FAM did previously.
Uh huh.
That they provided to us that gives us kind of a benchmark.
Of value for the total assets?
Yes, it does.
And then obviously, I guess we're guessing as to what a lease of that much value is in an airport content?
No, they actually did a calculation of the lease value for it.
Oh, okay.
So we do have kind of a beginning piece of that.
Okay.
But this one will be refining that some.
Okay.
And it's also updating it because that's two years old.
Got it.
So FAA does not allow it to be accepted for a lease if that's considered dated.
Okay.
But we do have that, and that can give us an idea of what we're going to be seeing coming forward.
Okay. I would just have a question for JT then of, if you've seen that preliminary number, does that seem like a number that is going to be doable for FAM?
Yes. The fee simple appraisal was roughly $7 million for the entire airfield, $4 million in improvements, and I believe classic colladium appraised around $1.3 million.
Okay.
The only, you know, and we'll have to wait, I guess, for FAA feedback on this, but on the runways and taxiways, I mean, it's, well, we'll just wait and see what the FAA says about it.
Okay.
But that being amortized over the life of the lease, good to go.
Okay.
And part of what we can do is, as we go through this conversation with FAA, remember that I made a point about they're willing to be flexible with us.
If we feel like that rent value is going to be overly burdensome, we can go to them and say, hey, guys, maybe we need to discount this a little bit for the runway since we're not charging landing fees, etc. So those are things we can discuss and work out to come to what everyone agrees is an acceptable market rate.
Right. Okay.
Could you go into explanation about the landing fees? I mean, it says here that we're not doing it right now, so how does somebody, how's an airport actually charged for somebody for landing and taking off?
Well, commercial airports do landing fees, and they track them.
They have like a contract with the airline?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
And they, they track them so that, you know, essentially, anytime a touchdown or takeoff happens, those are all tracked. And they do have landing fees. And, you know, JT, you can explain what you think long-term may happen?
Yeah, so it's unlikely that we will charge landing fees out there. Typically, on a GA port, King Air or 12,500 pounds or less are always waived. And so the only really aircraft that would be larger would be military that typically comes in or a Citation. And then even if we did charge a landing fee, it's offset by if they purchase fuel.
I see.
And I see you're shaking your head, Lowell, so I see, I think you agree with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's not common in GA airports.
Okay, good.
You make, you make your revenues off of leases, fuel sales through your, your general aviation. You know, a lot of them have put in restaurants and other things that are having amenities for that.
Sure.
Thank you. Good.
We are assuming a normal increase in rent that you would see based on inflation. It'll be, right now in the lease, it's the greater of 3% or Consumer Price Index that would go into that annual increase. As far as revenue share, it's normal in business for a private investor to make a return on their investment. The assets do belong to the city, so they're leasing city government assets. So there's a little bit of give and take there that goes into place, and that's why we gave you two options to consider. Option one is essentially a straight rent, and that rent would be updated every five years based off an updated appraisal. And the city could request a more often update if something significant changes out there, like there's major investments that occur that increase that value substantially. You could request a new appraisal. Federal Aviation Administration normally requires one at least every 10 years. So you would have to do one within five to 10 years anyway. So this is a little more often, and there would be no what we would call upside revenue share. This would be straight, straight-based rent based off market value. Okay? Which should accomplish the majority of that market value. Okay? Option two has a market-based rent, but it has a deferral period built in of that rent that's automatic for the first five years, and it also has what we call revenue sharing, such that if the airport starts spinning off significant revenues, that the city would get a share of that. Okay? Now, that's complicated because it's what's called net revenue, which a lot happens before it gets to net revenue. There's operating expenses, there's all kinds of things that go into it that goes into, but at net revenue, there could be some sharing of that.
Sure.
That's not uncommon, but in these types of airports, it's also not that common. So it's really a policy call for the, the City Council between those two. And as I mentioned earlier, that, what is paid to you, whether it's through rent or revenue sharing of excess revenues, you can then pay yourself back for previous advances. So that gives you that flexibility.
To be honest with you, I like option one because it's simple, directed to the point, and it pretty much knows what the target and what we're going to receive. I think if we went with option two, that's just going to be more complicated, there's going to be a more expense put into figuring those things out, and I, and I don't really like the idea that the amount of revenue changes depending on how, how well they do. If you are a landlord and you run out of building, you have a fixed rent for the life of the contract, and then if inflation goes up, you write another contract and you increase the amount to a certain amount. But what you're saying here is we're telling them, you know, if you make more money than we get to make more money, well, if they make more money and if we ask for 10% revenue, 10% of 100,000 is, is good, but 10% of 500,000 is good, but the more they make, the more we still would make.
Right.
So I think because this has gone on now for more than two years, it's been complicated, we've had two different sets of City Councils, I, I just think it's time for us to get this simple and get it quickly over and move forward so because it'll be less expensive for money, for the city putting money out and getting to the point where we can basically face this business and get it done quickly as possible. That's just my opinion, and I appreciate yours too.
Yep. Well, I, I agree with you on option one just because it is a lot more simple.
Yeah.
Also, option two, you know, in business, there's a lot of ways that you can account business, especially whenever you're talking about net and not gross. So, you know, I think it's a whole lot more trouble than it's going to be worth, not to mention the fact that you've now got government that's looking into the books of private business, and if they were a, you know, publicly traded company, then that's one thing, but that's probably not likely to be in the, in the near future, so it just seems like a big hassle.
Yeah.
Also, as far as the bills and for our planning purposes of the, of the airport, you know, I, I think that we should base our payback and everything off of that base rent, not worrying about what may happen in the future. You know, as a city, we really can't play those kinds of games. It's more of a, a private equity type of game to play, so I would rather base it off of simple rent, straightforward.
Good point. Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Any comments on your side?
So, and so we have direction on which way to go. Can we have a, a motion in a second on that?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve revenue share option number one.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second the motion. So we have a motion and a second. Questions on the two options or the motion? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Did we ever get Shelley online?
She said she would try to get online.
But we don't know if she's on or not then. She's not, okay, thank you.
The next page, page seven, really talks about FAM's investments. This is important from the standpoint of what I call optics, and FAM has essentially been putting pursuit cost in this. That's normally counted as their investment. In addition to that, they've been operating the airport, even though it's prior to the lease itself, you can allow them to count that too as part of their investment into the airport. And these items become important over time for two reasons. One, it essentially shows to you as a city and to the public the investment the private sector is making into the airport. In addition to that, there may be times in the future they're making investments that it does result in what we would call rent credits. So it's important that we check that, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute collectively.
Can I ask you one question if somebody knows the answer? On the rent, I know that we were, basically, our, our rent revenue was lower than what we need to pay the bills, so is it approximately 50% of what, of what we bring in is actually the cost of running the airport? Does anybody know? Is it...
Answer that one, since you're collecting it.
I mean, for what you're getting paid to manage the airport now, what would the normal rent be that would cover the, if the city was managing it, and be basically revenue neutral?
Oh, just as a percent, JT.
Yeah.
Just as a percent.
So, well, currently, the 120,000 is probably 10% of what a pure airport would do.
Oh.
Yeah.
So you're taking a beating out there right now.
Kind of are. Y'all could totally, those rents early, we'll be very happy with that one day.
To, to an airport of this size, that's probably in the ballpark, but compared to your cost itself, it's not quite that.
Yeah, well, I just, part of the reason we got here is because of the fact, for as long as I've known, the airport was, was always, always on a negative side. We were always losing money, and very rarely did we ever have anybody out there managing it, and we basically just used somebody to lock and unlock the doors, and once in a while, somebody out there answering their phones, and that's really how we got here because there's so much potential at the airport to, as long as it's managed properly. And so I'm glad we finally got to this point, it's been a long time, but I'm anxious to see what the end result's going to be on the revenue goal. I'm looking forward to that part, so thank you.
Just an administrative issue. Clerk, if you want, make sure to get the business cards from the people that are speaking so we can keep track of who's speaking, because you know our voices, but you won't know theirs when you do the recording record.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
In the draft lease, there is the provision for what we call base rent credits, where if FAM makes investments in the airport that are capital improvements, they're, with their own investment funds, there is the opportunity for those to be credits against rent as a percent, and we've built in processes to accomplish that.
Yeah, the only caution I would have about that is obviously, the objective here for the city is not only to have the airport ran effectively, but it's also to recoup the funds that have been expended out there.
Yes.
Specifically from the other funds that were not airport funds, i.e. general fund and solid waste. So, you know, rent credits are fine, but at the end of the day, that, that is our objective, and that's what has to be accomplished, so...
Right, and, and the only way this would occur is if, say, they build a building that would be titled in the city's name.
Mm-hmm.
So it would be an asset that you would get for the city collectively.
Yeah.
So...
Well, and even on that, I mean, you know, you can, Mr. Williams knows, you can build a nursery, you know, to, to do some type of a trial for a very specific purpose that doesn't have much use outside of that purpose, and that's not really going to do the city much good. You know, if you're building, if they're go out there building tea hangers or something like that, that the city can then rent out, well, that's one thing, you know.
No, these, these would be strictly for aeronautical operations.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And we anticipate if they do private investment, that actually would be a separate entity that would have a sublease.
I see.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So in other words, if they come in, you know, whether it's another agency wants to put a warehouse out there like emergency management, or if one of FAM's affiliates wants to put a processing facility, they would have a sublease with FAM.
Okay.
For that particular parcel, and they would pay rent.
Okay.
Okay, does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
So, just like you do today.
Okay.
Out there. Economic development centers, these are from the prior original lease that were approved by the city. These are not what I would call fixed, these are goals. And the goals are to create 50 permanent jobs by year five. Now, these are not strictly on the airport, these are within the community. So there's a certain percentage in the county, a certain percentage in the city, so this is generating jobs for the community.
Mm-hmm.
And then by year 10, 100, and year 15, 150. Now, in those situations, you could give incentives to FAM to help encourage them to meet those goals. So potential for that would be, you know, if they have a investment product out there that they're going to do and they have a rent schedule, they might give them a reduced rent for that particular parcel, just like you might do with an economic development project where you do a tax credit for a period of time.
Yeah.
So there, there's options to do that to incentivize them, and that's something that we're talking with them about. But we didn't, we didn't want to make it punitive, we want to make it positive as an encouragement to accomplish those.
Okay.
So any, any guidance that you have as a, as a council on that would be much appreciated.
Well, I, I had no problem with, of having goals, and I'm sure that FAM has their own goals, the, you know, the, the more that they do, the better off, they're going to be financially, the better off the city will be. My question is, one, how did you come up with these figures? I mean, I had no idea. It seems like they were just kind of pulled out of a hat. How would you come up with 50 people, 50 employees, 150 employees after so many years? I just don't know where you came up with those numbers. Did you just, somebody just make them up, or did somebody have a example to go by? I mean, it just seems kind of strange to me.
They weren't made up, they were essentially generated in the discussions we had back in time in generating that first initial lease. So it was in the discussions between FAM and the city to put those together, and it was in the lease that you previously approved, so...
So in other words, you're saying it's, it's their wish to have these goals because they have a feeling that they might be able to meet one or some of them, and that, that they get more money, earn, bigger revenue share, then it's a plus for them, so they're, so FAM is okay with this type of a plan?
Pardon?
Can I try now?
Sure. When he said city, it was council was involved in this, and with some prior council wanted these jobs and what types they wanted, so...
Yeah.
And now, just with Lowell, he's talking about this, but there doesn't have to be goals. It can just be, they're building things, and you got economic development, and the city's making money that way, but it was council who discussed these, it wasn't, you know, just made up.
But council came up with those numbers?
Well, with everybody talking, yeah, it kept growing and growing, and then one thing I remember, I remember it got down to, could it be a grove worker if they're growing hemp? If they're growing hemp and that, yeah, they would count. Could it be somebody part-time? Well, not part-time. Are they a city resident? Are they a resident of unincorporated Highlands County? So, yes, it was, council was fully involved in this. It's just been so long.
Plus, it was also part of their assailant point, when they originally came in to talk to individual commissioners.
It just seems, it seems strange to me, but if FAM is okay with it, then it's just a goal, it's nothing that's.
So, one question, since we did not go with the revenue share option.
Yeah.
That would not be on the table then. It would be reduced rent, correct?
He's basically saying that we change that to like a rent credit of some type. We don't know yet, you know, and that's something that the commission, you know, the council would have to decide on. And so, you know, it's, the change, the change is the wording, but the idea would be the same.
Okay. And so, would the employees be FAM employees, or they would be employees that worked anywhere out at the airport? Just to clarify.
Anywhere, and even in the community.
It wouldn't even have to be FAM employees. If they bring in a company out there.
Right.
That hires employees, that would count. You know, if they, if they are buying product that's then being processed there, that's going to have to have, you know, workers or whatever to generate that product.
Sure.
So, it would count for those as well.
Example, processing plant of one of the hemp products out there, some chemical, they all have farms that then grow the raw material, so every single one of those workers would count towards that. Everyone that hauls it to there would count towards that, you know. It goes on and on and on.
In the city or the county?
It's whatever rules that we set. It's just, my personal opinion is that, again, with the profit sharing, this, a lot of this is for nothing. I think a lot of these numbers wind up getting fudged. If you've seen a lot of the DEO grants out there, you know, they have the same similar requirements. I've seen time and time again how they're, you know, less effective than the DEO would probably like them to be, put it nicely. And I think a lot of this is just a lot of hogwash that we should probably not worry about.
Do you want to take a vote on doing away with that, those goals?
Oh, do you have any more questions about it there, Brittany?
No.
Okay.
A motion would be nice.
Yeah, I'm thinking that basically automatically, if there is more business, there is more revenue, there is more employees, either way, the city makes more money off of their income, their taxes, their shopping, restaurants and that. So, I don't know whether, I don't know whether we need the goals, but I think we could do away without this, but I think it would automatically would give us more revenue without necessarily giving them more revenues. I think it's a win-win, the better that they do, one way or another. The main thing we were looking for originally was to be able to, one, not be a negative inflow to the airport that we always lost money in, and we knew that anytime we had somebody out there, one, the city would be positive income, because we weren't going to be losing any money. So, that's, we made money right off the bat from that point.
Yep.
Wouldn't have to hire someone for you.
I mean, I think they're still going to have the goal to, to have the airport do better, because it's going to, you know, better their bottom line. So, I don't, I think, I kind of agree with Garrett in this, in this sense, that this is kind of a mute point as far as how many jobs it's bringing.
Well, consider from this.
Because I feel like if they're a private organization, they're going to go for more.
Right.
Consider from this perspective, it's totally you giving them something.
Right.
So, no penalty. So, if you want to do it in the future, you can always amend the contract to add it in.
Yeah, but that's a good point, too, is that unless it's a penalty-driven, as in, you have to create 50 jobs, or you're out of here by such and such a date, then it's pointless. And so.
So, do we agree we could mainly just do away with this?
If you make a motion and it passes, then yes, we do agree.
Okay, I make a motion that we leave the goal adjustment to FAM revenue off of the lease agreement.
Okay, Jared, does that suffice?
Yeah, I think so.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
I second.
We're just looking for direction, but we'll bring you back language once it's, once it's done for one direction.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
For your protection as a city, there will be financial controls and guidelines built into the agreement. These are things that both you as a city and FAA and FDOT will be looking to. Any city advances, there are no assumed city advances in this lease. So, any future city advances that you would make would have to go through your normal budget process. So, it would have to compete against other uses, whether it's from general fund, or CRA, or whatever source you're looking at.
So, every future council would have the ability to have their say?
That's correct.
Okay.
FAM positions and budget would be in FAM's control. There are key positions that are required in the lease, such as the airport manager, maintenance manager, planner, finance director. These can be part-time, so it's not required that they be full-time positions. Salaries and expenses normally would be benchmarked against similar airports in this. The budget would be provided for your comment, but it would not be a required approval item. FAM would require, would develop and implement that, but you could certainly have comment on it.
But the, when you mentioned part-time, is there, do we define part-time in there, or is there like a minimum, say, somebody says, you know, somebody, you know, have an airport manager, and they work two hours a week, you know, that's part-time?
We just define the positions in the lease now. We don't define the time requirement.
Okay.
Yeah, well, on that same note, what about minimum maintenance requirements? I'm assuming, obviously, you're going to go by FAA standards and all that. So, when it comes down to, you know, security, upkeep of the buildings, blah, 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 is all that?
Yes, we will have basic performance standards built into the lease that are going to have to meet FDOT and FAA requirements.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there anything above and beyond FAA or FDOT requirements that you feel we should be concerned about or talk about?
Ah.
I'm not sure that DOT would have a requirement on, you know, is the bathroom clean? You know what I mean? That sort of thing.
No, those are things that we can add.
Okay.
You know, basic cleanliness and those types of things, certainly.
Obviously, we're, because of all the grants out there, you know, the airport has to remain open for GA.
Right.
Traffic. And so, I'm sure with that, there's probably a certain line of standards that, you know, the taxiways have to be usable and straps out there for them to tie their planes down and all this sort of thing, so.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
The, they will not be able to pledge your assets.
Okay.
They can pledge the lease. They can pledge the revenue stream from the lease as far as financing, but they can't pledge like a mortgage on the assets. So, Florida statute, nor FAA will allow that.
And just a question for JT. You know, we had talked about this in some previous meetings about the loan guarantees and things like that, that you guys were planning. You guys have fully fleshed out this lease is going to work for all your future plans of all these loan guarantees, everything that you guys are trying to do with state and with federal government and all that.
Yeah, as far as, I mean, if we can't mortgage, that's one thing, but yeah, to securitize the revenue shares there for conduit financing and bonding, we can do that.
Okay.
And they will be able to mortgage new investment.
Hmm.
For example, if they come in and build a processing facility, they'll be able to mortgage that building.
I see.
Okay, because that would not be a city building, that would be the investor's building.
Okay.
So, those would be allowed. Their, obviously, annual budget, they'll do an annual financial report on the airport and also an audit. And included, they will have keep-up schedules on the city prior advances and how much has been paid, et cetera, so you can see that over time.
Well, let me ask you one question on the, or the operations and the maintenance. There's probably nobody in the city that's really qualified to go out there and say that everything is up to standards, but don't they have FAA regulation where they come out every so many years and look at the airport to make sure that it's up to date and running properly?
It's really more on an inspection basis?
Yes.
You can request it? And I'm sure they will try to work it in their schedule. And something I was talking with Mark about, this is something you could do yourself every three years or so, just have a spot check.
By whom?
You know, have a spot check.
By whom?
It's up to the city. You could bring in FDOT, you could bring in FAA.
Okay.
Or you can bring some other expert in, airport expert.
You know, and just do a spot check.
Okay.
Does that, somebody wants a question?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Actually, at your airport currently, you have an annual inspection that's conducted by the FDOT. They do it in, they do it for the FAA. So, you actually have a report every year about what areas you're deficient in, and you have to talk with those folks. And there's a ladder of progression. You have to come up with dates of when you're going to have corrective action, so that you can operate as an airport in a national plan of integrated airport systems and operate on the same level that somebody over in Tampa has a reasonable expectation that they're going to have the same safe environment when they come flying to this airport here. So, you already have that, and we have software that we use for daily inspections to meet those compliance requirements, so we can generate reports at any time for that. But you get a report every year from FDOT about how your airport's doing.
Okay. Your name and title, what the company is?
Yes, sir. Michael Powell. I'm the chief operations officer. I'm the airport guy.
Okay, the airport guy, all right.
Michael, have they had that inspection since you've been managing in the airport?
Yes, sir, they have.
And did we fix everything that they found needed to be fixed, or?
No, sir, but I very kindly let those folks know if they gave me all the grant dollars that I needed, I could have every single issue out there addressed.
Okay.
And it's probably fair to say that anything that is functional to GA, you probably hear about long before that inspector gets there.
I certainly do, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm sure one big thing is probably the fence all around there, right? That's not necessarily a secure airport with the fence that we have now.
It does have quite a few issues, and I believe that's coming up for your kind consideration on the design portion.
We got a rant for that.
Okay, okay, good.
Okay.
Yeah, things are going well.
As far as performance monitoring, this would be self-monitoring by FAM, and they would provide you periodic information. We have asked, and this is something you guys are welcome to address, to essentially put on the web, you know, basic information, because you guys, as a council member or staff, may get phone calls periodically, and if they could just have some basic information on the website, that's give you ready access to the information. And usually, that would be updated monthly, if not more often.
Mm-hmm.
And that could be basic information about how many flights, you know, what's open, what's not open, what are the operating times, those kind of things that you would normally see. And then annually, there would be an operations report to the city, as well as the annual financial report and the audit, and any required FAA or FDOT reports. And built into the lease, the city, as well as FAA and FDOT, would have the right for inspection at any time. That's normal for these types of agreements. City approvals that would be included, any change in the airport land, such as an expansion or a surplus of any land, would need to go through the city for approval, because that would essentially change the scope of the lease.
Mm-hmm.
Any change in the airport master plan, which you've approved, FAA has that on file, FAM has that as far as their guideline. If they want to add a bunch of new buildings or make changes to the overall footprint of the master plan, that would come back to the city for review.
Okay. On that, I did have a question for JT. So, obviously, you guys more than likely have some ideas of what you'd like to change out there at the airport going forward. So, you probably have a vision, you know, I know that you had discussed, you know, possibly adding some more land to the airport. So, with what you have now, you probably have a vision. If you get that land, you probably have a vision for that, and I would imagine that's probably going to be coming to us somewhat soon, in the next, you know, what, months, year, what, something like that. And then after that, you're probably not going to change it very often, right? It's.
Yeah, well, real quickly, it's just, yeah, any, well, I'll let the planner.
Let me say one thing real quick. FAA asked us to keep this application, what we call clean.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, they said, don't go start changing the master plan as part of this.
Sure.
Because it'll trigger all kinds of other reviews. So, they said, keep it clean. So, FAM understood that.
Yep.
And in the meantime, they've been developing plans, and you're right, they'll come back to you with changes and recommendations based off that.
Okay.
That's the short answer, but we're, we're going to do public process for any larger master plan that we do. And when you, more specifically, when it says a major capital project, we've already kind of talked to you all, shown you all diagrams of what we may do in the future. That's not in the current master plan, so as of this stage, we're just executing the current master plan. If we do have any major changes to that plan, it will either go, come up in a master plan, as Lowell's noting, or it'll be a master plan update change, which has to go through a formal process that the FAA has to be approved by you all.
Right, so this isn't something that you're going to want to try to do every six months?
No.
You know?
You'll approve that master plan, that's what we're sticking to, unless there's a major change in it.
Yeah.
That goes through a process.
Okay. Ever the record, your name and title with the company?
My name is Scott David, and I'm chief of planning and facilities for FAM.
Very good, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, a master plan update is done every seven years unless there's absolutely nothing new going on. And part of that process is you do have, you folks are required to be involved, you have a technical advisory committee, and experts in the field and/or stakeholders, folks that use the airport, community leaders, they all would have, you know, some say in how we build and decide we're going to grow short, medium, and long-range goals of this public asset. So, the community would have buy-in of how they want us to develop their asset.
Okay, very good.
So, a question to the council is, do you want to approve capital improvements within that master plan? In other words, if they're going to build a new building, after you've approved the master plan that has a list of potential buildings, do you want to have the okay when they come back to you and say, hey, we're ready to implement hangar X, or we're ready to build new building Y?
Yeah.
Do you want that to come back to you, or is the master plan adequate?
Yeah, I mean, my personal feeling on it, unless it is, I mean, I could understand why there may be going to be like a, you know, a certain amount of millions of dollar trigger or something like that, that would then come back to us. But generally, I would feel that if you already approved the plan of buildings are going to go here, here, and here, drainage is here, yada, 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 it's approved. You know, why have to rehash it every single time, particularly if you're going to build, let's say, a really long set of tea hangers, and it has four phases or something? You know, if it's been approved, you don't want it to come back every single time. Just my personal feeling on it. You know, if the council wants to put in like, you know, anything over, you know, 5 million or 10 million or something to that effect, it has to be approved, sure. But, you know, if it's just the mundane little buildings here and there, I don't see a point in bringing it back to us over and over again. If anyone else has any comments, please?
I agree with that, too, because like what you said earlier, we want to keep this thing as clean as possible. So, the least amount of additions that we have or things that we don't need to take out is the quicker and easiest way we can get to the transition period. And I think that it's been, it's been a long time for some members on this council, as well as for FAM. And I'm, I think we need to move as quickly as possible to have, give you the information we provided today, get it back into a reasonable contract that we can say, okay, and get them get it back into a reasonable contract that we can say, okay, and get them to sign. And let's get this done, say, three months, if possible.
So I guess there was two options there, was the option of just forget about it after the master plan is done. And the other option was to forget about it except for amounts over a certain amount, less five million is what the mayor suggested, but, you know, just threw out there. So we need a motion really to implement those so we know what to do with the contract, if you would, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Just one question for JT, real quick. Obviously, you heard me throw out, you know, five, 10, $20 million numbers. I know that you can build a new FBO for, you know, a couple million bucks, you know. Any insight or any opinion that you guys would have on what an acceptable number would be for it to come back to us? Or is it worth our time and your opinion?
I feel like it's kind of a mute issue, not on a, it's not really a pricing threshold. We'll have to do an ALP if we, if it's outside of the master plan. And there's already a formal process in place for that anyway.
So on the, the grants, obviously, you know, if you're going to go build a taxiway, FAM's probably not going to fund that, right? It's going to come from a grant of some sort.
Yes.
So now, does the city still have to approve these grants each time? No, okay. All right. So if it's in the plan?
They'll apply for the grants and they'll manage them.
Okay. Understood. All right. So I guess the question to the council is, do you want to stick with whatever the master plan says it says once it's approved? Or do you want to try to put in some type of a trigger to bring it to the council?
If we stick with the master plan as is, is it going to be changed in five years?
Well, you're, you will, this will be in the contract. So you're, you'll have to state that if you want that in the, in there because otherwise it'll be just whatever the master plan. If you say now, it's going to be whatever the master plan says, you'll have an opportunity to change it whenever the master plan has changed and you approve that.
Okay.
But, but otherwise, you know, if you want to put a, a limit on that, then, then now's the time to do that. And you can always change that limit later on, you know. And I, I can't picture, you know, somebody putting in a, you know, $15 million building and the city saying, no, that's too much, you know. No, it's going to, I think there's not going to be a problem there. So I, I think it's reasonable to say, you know, we'd like to look at it and make sure that it's, you know, it meets that present council's requirements.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor? I, I just want it as simple as possible, as easy as possible. If anybody else thinks we need to put a five or $10 million limit on there, that's, I'd like to hear it.
Well, the only thing, what the attorney just said, the, the last part that he just said. We are making decisions for today, next five years or whatever, but we're not going to always be here. You know, anything could happen with the next election.
This is for 30 years. This is for 30 years.
30 years. So I just think that, you know, that's what's going on now. I think we should take in consideration when we make decisions, what could change in the future and how the new council, you know, have it where they're able to make some decisions if they need be. And not that we have set them in stone.
Then maybe a motion that states that we'll, whatever is in the master plan, they can build except up to a limit if they try to build, they want to build a building over, what, X, 10 million, 15 million?
20 million.
I would say minimum 20. Because of the infrastructure as well. I'm sorry, Santiago Fernandez, FAM. You know, the, the master plan's going to guide that, it really is. And if a new council does come in, they will have an opportunity, i.e., Michael says they happen every seven years. So whatever council will be in place at that time, we'll, we'll have an opportunity to weigh in on that master plan. What I'm concerned with is with our business timelines that we have to come back for approval. You know, we may get funding for a large portion of what we're doing or we may do it in phases because it makes business sense. And then to have to go back to you all, in, within that business model, to have to go back to you all in execution of the actual master plan. You know, we're going to get into it. And then let's say we have a council that's, we've already have an approved master plan and an approved business model which, which we've already presented to you all. Now we've got, you know, someone that says, no, I don't want that there anymore.
Sure.
You know, that's our concern, you know, obviously for obvious reasons.
I understand.
So how restrictive is the master plan? I mean, are there already restrictions in there or?
There'll, there'll be restrictions in, in there, but it won't be monetary.
It's, it's not restrictive as much as it is, it outlines your plan for what you want to do as far as the number of buildings, et cetera. So it's very specific.
Perhaps the size of the buildings as well, but not, not the monetary value.
No.
Right. Yeah, so mainly what it is, is obviously it has an outline of where all the taxiways, where all the future taxiways are. And then it has specific areas, you know, it's roughly 400 acres in total out there. And you have, you know, certain areas that are always going to be drainage because it's swampland, whatever. You have certain areas that are going to be industrial buildings, certain areas can tie into the runway.
So as far as our approvals in the future, we would strictly just be saying how big the building is and how much, how much they're paying for? Or is there any restrictions as far as what's going into each of, of the buildings or?
It'll be the type, type of building.
The type of building, okay.
And also so far as what the FAA and FDOT require as well.
Okay.
I actually think we could go with the, the price of $20 million. And the reason why I say that is because we've all seen in the last several years how prices of materials, inflation, everything is going up and now something's going down, but it could go back up. And, and $20 million could, in five years, could be only worth $5 million today. So I'll be happy to make the motion that we stick with the, the master plan and only changes if they do something over 20 million.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. One further point on that is, as they said, they're going to be coming back to us very soon after this lease is done to, to change the master plan anyway. So we'll have a good time to look over that master plan and make sure everyone agrees. And if they're going to do it every seven years, you know, now that we're on four-year terms, you're basically only talking about possibly two changes.
Right.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Benard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good.
Other city approvals would be disposition of assets. Any advances to the airport we talked about previously would need to go through the budget process. I highlighted the extension of the lease term beyond 30 years. And this was a, an item that FAM raised. And their, their intent is what, what is going to be your decision-making in making those extensions? So they're trying to get from their perspective, if I'm going to be making investments in the airport, how am I incentivized to make those investments? And what might you consider as far as performance factors of making those extensions? So they're trying to get an idea because it is the future and we are talking about new councils. So are there things we can build into the lease that might be like performance standards such as, one, it's making revenue and the revenue's positive as an example? And are there others that might be built into that to help guide the, the council in making good decisions about those extensions?
Sure. I mean, the only two areas in my mind that, that would really be relevant is, as you said, is it making revenue? And also is it growing? You know, we don't want to see stagnation. Obviously, the whole point of having the outside firm is to see growth. So I'm not sure how you would quantify that into some type of a criteria per se, but, yeah, some, some type of a, there has to be new growth every so many years or something.
I agree. I think that's something that's important.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I mean, I understand the growth side of it, but let's say we have it built out and we do have it performing on all cylinders and we, we've reached capacity at that airfield in 30 years. And now as a business, it's time, you know, our debt services pay down on whatever any of our outstanding is. And now it's time for us to see the upside after year 30.
Sure.
Per se. And so we, we just want to seek some sort of provision or covenant that says that, that the renewal can't be unreasonably withheld.
The problem with that is without objective criteria, you know, it, it's going to lead to litigation. I won't be here when that happens, but somebody will be here. And I hope I'm alive, but it's unlikely. So, I mean, but, but I don't want somebody cursing me whether I'm dead or alive. So, you know, I, I think we need objective criteria in order to meet this of some type. It just can't be, you know, automatic, you guys get it and, you know, and I'm sure you don't want, you know, subjective on our side either. But, you know, we need to think of some type of objective criteria that we can deal with in order to make this right.
Could I suggest that, you know, our team and JT make some suggested criteria and we'll bring that back to you?
Please.
Yeah, that would be good because I think it has to be fair to the city and it has to be fair to them too. I mean, if, if they spend a lot of time and money and effort out there and if for some reason they do build out, it wouldn't be fair to them if somebody, a new council or new city staff says, boy, they're doing great out there, they're making tons of money. So 30 years, sorry, and now give it back to us. That, that, that isn't quite fair. So yes, between the two, you could come up with something that's fair and I think we would agree with that easily.
Yeah. And, you know, I think that in 30 years, if they're barely paying the bills, they're not going to want to be here in 30 years. You know, this situation is either going to work out big or it's not going to work out at all. You know, I don't think there's really going to be a just getting by situation here. So there, there should be enough wiggle room in there that we can come up with something that basically guarantees you the lease will continue unless it's already going to be a bad situation for you guys anyway. You know what I mean?
Right.
So.
Okay. I agree with that.
The other approvals would be seller assignment of the lease to another company. Subleases that would occur beyond the lease term. So say a new lease starts in year 25 and it's going to go for 20 years. Those would need to come to the council because they would be essentially your leases after the lease term ended. So those would come in. And then the city has the right to step in if they're not meeting FAA requirements.
Sure.
So that's just a standard catch-all that FAA will require.
Jerry, were you going to say something on the?
No.
On the lease issue of assigning it, so, you know, companies sometimes merge with other companies, change their name, et cetera, get bought out, traded, sold, whatever. So from your guys' perspective?
Yeah, we, we would really like the ability to, I mean, we might restructure internally, we might go public one day.
Sure.
You know, and we kind of need the autonomy to be able to do that.
So obviously, we don't want to see, you wouldn't want to see FAM listing the airport on eBay, right? Yeah, that, that sort of situation. But at the same time, I understand why, you know, companies merge, right? So I would, I would look for some way of quantifying that, that it's not going to be sold per se. But at the same time, you can, you can add FAM, you can add an E to FAM, whatever, you know what I'm saying?
I mean, it could be sold to FAM. You know, that could be the 30-year option at the end of that.
Yeah, but not through eBay.
You want to be comfortable with the financial ability of whoever it is coming in as well. So this might be one of those situations where you have the, and shall not be unreasonably withheld.
Say that one more time, Jerry.
You want to have some, some look at the financial ability. I mean, if they basically, you know, say, okay, we want, we want out, you know, we're going to sell to these, these people here. And they haven't got, you know, I won't, they don't have any money. That, you know, they don't have any ability to operate, maybe they don't have the expertise. You know, these are all things that, you know, you're going to want to make sure that they have or whoever it is that makes that decision. So I, I think that falls under the unreasonable, that, you know, the clause, most of the assignments that states that, and such approval shall not be unreasonably withheld. And, you know, you might want to consider some objective criteria. I don't know. I mean, like, like I said, the unreasonable word causes litigation. But also, you know, because we already have an attorney's fees clause in here.
Sure.
You know, the, that's just a question we have, it's coming up as to whether you want to do that. In those circumstances, you know, nobody wants to pay the cost of losing that battle either. So it generally tends to cause people to, to resolve it.
So Lowell, having heard the questions that I asked and the comments that Jerry made, I mean, do you have a pretty clear picture of what we're after and maybe some way of kind of working that?
Yes.
Okay.
We've already been thinking about it.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll include that sale option as well as the extension option, both. As far as next steps, there's two key parts to this. There's an AIPP application itself and then there is the lease document which forms the part of that. FAA said, we want to see the whole package as, as they go through that. So we'll wrap that up. FAM's responsible for the AIPP application. The city team is responsible for the lease as far as the assignments. And we're working collaborative to get those two finished. And I believe, you know, if we work hard, we should be able to get this in, in March. I cannot guarantee how long FAA is going to take. They have to do a 60-day public notice period under their regulations. They can start that hopefully as soon as they get it. The other thing they're looking for is public input. And we will document all the city public meetings that have occurred that are essentially noticed, that you've had people participate in and be a part of, and they're very respectful of that. The other thing we have to do is do a final survey of the tenants. And FAA will be looking at that survey. They don't need their approval per se. They're looking for their comments and we will ask them for their approval, okay? But they don't have to give it per se. But usually they're looking for a majority of people saying like this.
Sure.
So that's another part that they'll be looking at as part of their.
When you say majority of people, you're talking about majority of whatever the public participation is?
It's really the majority of the actual tenants at the airport, yeah. So public participation is a separate part. It's kind of a checkbox they're looking for. The, the tenants are actually looking for their comments.
So obviously, this is, this program has never actually gone to completion, right?
AIPP.
No, it has.
Oh, it has?
The Puerto Rico Airport, they're actually a large commercial airport in San Juan.
Okay.
Is an approved AIPP.
Okay.
It's the largest one. There is, Air Glades is in the process and there's a couple others that are in the process, but that's the only one that's officially operating.
Okay. But Air Glades is nothing like our situation. It started, it started out as a.
Yeah, most of the ones that have had difficulty have been commercial and the airlines that have objected to them. They said, and they expect most of them in the future to BGA airports.
Okay. You've never seen one fail based upon public participation and tenant comments?
No, we have.
You have?
Yes. The tenant comment was the airlines at the commercial. Because St. Louis and Midway, both their commercial airports were considered for AIPP and the tenants, meaning the airlines, objected.
Okay.
So FAA said, if that, if it has a problem, that's where it occurs.
I hope your tenants are happy, guys.
Right. So we, we've had that conversation.
One other thing that I want to get to that is not on here, and I mentioned it just, just a few moments ago. And that is that the attorney's fees, I, I would like a vote on that. Let me explain to, we, we added the, you know, that particular clause in the agreement in the lease. And there, but there's, I just want to explain, I, I always add it and, but I want you, I want the client basically to make the decision because it's a two-edged sword, as they, as they say, you know. On the one hand, if you prevail, it's a wonderful thing if the other party is collectible. If they're not collectible, then you prevail, you still end up paying your own attorney fees. So that's meaningless at that point. It was, it was not a good idea to do the attorney's fees clause. And the other side is if you lose, you're going to pay a lot, especially if you're collectible. So, you know, that's, those are some of the considerations. The one good thing about it is it makes both parties a little more hesitant to just jump at a lawsuit and, and try to fight it out because that's a lot of money that's on the line. And, and sometimes it can be ruination amounts of money because attorneys charge a lot of money. I, I'll, not me, of course, I'm very reasonable, but anyway, that's, that's my explanation. So I, I would like a vote as to whether you want to keep it in or take it out.
Okay. And so the provision that you're talking about specifically is that if this is in there, then each party has to pay the other one's attorney's fees?
Whoever prevails in a lawsuit or action litigation is, including media, including arbitrations and things like that, if they're, if they're built in, you could see attorney's fees and it's prevailing.
So in, is it civil actions to where a lot of times that's already in there? And civil actions is an automatic that if you lose?
No, American, the American system is that it's never in the, and it's never assumed. And there are some statutes that deal with it for, you know, spurious cases you can get, but it's not very much. It's 15,000, it might, might have gone up recently. And if you have it in a contract, it's enforceable.
I see.
A lot, a lot of cases, it's shared. You know, each party's responsible for their own attorney fees. In other cases, I've seen a lot of governments that have made it prevailing party.
Yeah, and I think the key thing is that, you know, if you, if you have it in there and you prevail, like I said, it, is the other party going to be collectible? If you're, if you're basically in a lawsuit because they're losing money and they've got all their money sunk into other things, you're not going to collect anyway. So it's better not to take that risk of having to pay their attorney's fees if you don't prevail.
Well, in that scenario, if someone is, you know, on the verge of bankruptcy already, what do they have to lose?
Right. Well, bankruptcy is in our situation, which is, has its own attorney's fees provisions associated with it, of which I'm not totally aware. It's a, it's a specialty in law, bankruptcy. But nevertheless, it's a good point. I mean, like I said, if, if they're not going to be, if FAM is not collectible when you end up in a lawsuit, then you're waste, you've wasted having that risk in there of having to pay their, their attorney's fees.
Yeah. Lowell, do you have a suggestion one way or another?
It's really, I, I think council's recommendation is the best way to go. Yeah.
Yeah.
Dave, you have any advice on that? We got to get Dave off mute.
He'll, he'll probably say yes, he's a lawyer.
Well, you know, chances are none of us will be, you know, actively practicing at the time. So we're not going to be making a big pile of cash off of this, one way or the other.
Dave, are you with us?
Shows he's there.
So, basically, in a nutshell, it's, you know, I can't recommend one way or the other, other than the things that I've just told you to consider, you know, and, you know, like I said, collectability is a big issue.
Sure, well, isn't it true that, you know, a corporation without personal guarantees could just simply dissolve, and that would stop?
That's a bankruptcy issue, the solution is part of bankruptcy, it can't just go away, you know, they have debts and things like that, so.
I see.
I can't answer, but we can find somebody to answer that question if you want.
Let me ask you this, if we were to have it to where each party pays their own legal fees, if they're in not good financial situation, why would they wanna spend the money on an attorney to?
Well, that's kinda where I'm going with it.
Yeah, so I don't know whether that makes a difference or not, I mean, to me, it could be everybody pays their own fees, and then, I don't know, it's one of those 50-50 shots.
Sure.
If I were actually making a decision, I think that was what I'd take into consideration, you know, under the circumstances, but I have to bring it to you for your decision.
Okay, all right, well, in light of that, it would be my suggestion that we do the 50-50, so everyone's responsible for their own legal fees.
So, everybody assumes their own responsibility for it, all right, thank you.
Correct, do we need a motion for that?
We need to have a motion, please.
Can we move?
Okay, we have a, so move, do we have a second? I'll second the motion. Do we have further questions? Anyone? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor? Deputy Mayor Benard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, anything else?
I just have one clarification from you, Lowell, if you don't mind, please. You made it sound like that the information that we gave you tonight would make it easy enough for you to complete all the city's part of their business by next month, so that the city council would be out of the process, it'd be all up to the FAA after that, and everybody applying for this, so we've given you everything that you need from us, hopefully in a month you'll come back, and then I'll start the process of 60-plus days, and whatever FAA goes after that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can I suggest, maybe, this was really helpful, because there was no, you know, before, after, you know, business associated with, maybe we could do something like this once a month, and they can always cancel if there's nothing to talk about, but at least we'll have it on the calendar, you know, once a month, on the third Thursday, or whatever you want, you know, just.
Get an update?
Get an update, if that's what you want, or make more decisions with regard to, you know, how things are going with it, and if there's any additional decisions to be made, especially if FAA comes back with comments, we have to deal with.
I'm sure they will come back with comments.
Yeah, that'll be a big issue, but if we can just simply say one for each month, then, like I said, we can cancel if need be, or we can go ahead and have it, and we'll have it on the calendar.
I think it's a good idea, I would just put the caveat in there, that if there's no actionable items by the city council, that we obviously cancel.
Right, so, third Thursday, is that good for everybody?
Right now, I use a Thursday, it's okay with me.
Okay.
And quite honestly, our goal will be to bring you the complete package at the next meeting.
That'd be wonderful, Lowell, I'd make all, I was very, very happy.
Okay, anything else, Lowell?
No, sir.
Okay, any further questions, council?
I'm glad we've made some changes in the last couple of weeks, and it seems like everybody's looked happy tonight, and I think we did it in a lot quicker time than I thought, so I'm glad your presentation was very easy to understand, Lowell, so I'll give you credit for that, and I think that, I know our city staff has worked hard too, for a couple of years, so I think everybody's gonna be happy to see this as quickly as possible, and we'll leave it up to FAM and FAA to find it out after that.
Yeah, Dave's office and Lowell have done a, you know, grand job with this, it's really complicated, and head spinning, and, you know, getting it to this point where it's, you know, a boilerplate for you guys to make the ultimate decisions on the key items.
Agreed, anything further from FAM?
All good here.
Okay, very good, well, that concludes our agenda, if there's nothing else for the good of the city, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.